Welcome to the September 28th Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Miller Wojciechowski.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Hanson. Paul Mary.
Here.
Present five.
And Deputy Mayor Mugrower will read our invocation followed by the pledge.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a proclamation this evening for Take Back the Night. All right, we have Alicia Johnson and Alicia Garrick this evening to receive the proclamation. Take Back the Night Day 2021, whereas sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence impacts all residents of the city of Oshkosh and the state of Wisconsin. Whereas 68 Wisconsin residents lost their lives to domestic and interpersonal violence in 2020, including three residents of Oshkosh. Whereas sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence remain a vastly under-reported crime. Whereas each resident of the city of Oshkosh plays a crucial role in ending and preventing sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence. Whereas the 31st Annual Take Back the Night Event will be co-hosted on October 6, 2021, by Christine Anne Domestic Abuse Services, Reach Counseling, and UW Oshkosh. Whereas residents from the city of Oshkosh and surrounding areas are invited to virtually gather to honor victims and survivors of sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence, and identify ways each person can be part of the solution to prevent sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence from happening in our community. Now, with the help of I, Lori Paul Mary, Mayor of the city of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence as a community issue and declare October 6, 2021 as Take Back the Night Day in the city of Oshkosh and urge all residents to join Christine Anne Domestic Abuse Services, Reach Counseling, and UW Oshkosh in virtually gathering to end sexual, domestic, and interpersonal violence in our community October 6 from 5 to 8 p.m. on Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Paul Mary. We're very grateful for this and being recognized as Take Back the Night Day on October 6. We hope that everyone can join us virtually on Wednesday, October 6 from 5 until 8. We also have these wonderful masks that Alicia Johnson is supporting. Where if you make a donation to either Christine Anne or Reach Counseling, you get one of these wonderful Stop the Violence masks. So, thank you so much, and we're very grateful to be here and for this proclamation.
Thank you. Good night. All right, next we have citizen's statements to council. Is there anyone registered?
No one is registered.
All right, how about for a public comment on agenda items?
No one is registered.
All right, very well. We'll move on to consent agenda items. Can I have a motion and a second?
I move approval.
Second.
Discussion on consent agenda items. All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried five.
We have several new ordinances this evening. There will be no action. They will not be voted on this evening, and they will be read again at the next council meeting. The first one is Ordinance 21484, amend parking regulations on designated streets and alleys. Ordinance 21485, amend parking regulations on South Main Street. 21486, restrict left turns from northbound Jackson Street to westbound Nevada Avenue, and remove the left turn restriction from Jackson Street to New York Avenue from 3 to 7 p.m. Say that three times. Ordinance 21487, designate bicycle lanes on West Ninth Avenue west of Oakwood Road. 21488, amend Chapter 9 Emergency and Disaster Planning and Response. 21489, amend ordinance for lead service line replacement to include galvanized lines downstream from lead water service lines. Counsel, have any questions on these pending ordinances? I just had one, and that is for Mr. Robry. Do we by chance have a visual for 21489 of what that looks like for folks? And how is this new from what we had?
So, the graphic that we have up on screen here is kind of showing an example of the water main out in the street. And then the blue part of the service going to the curb stop is the city's responsibility. And then the red part of the service going into the home is the homeowner's responsibility. So, in relation to this change to the ordinance, if any part of that red service line would be made of galvanized, and at any point in time, any part of that blue service line were lead, then all of the galvanized would be required to be replaced. This is in accordance with the updated federal lead and copper rule that is going into effect later this year. The reason behind that is just the makeup of the galvanized metal. It absorbs lead particles that have leached from the lead part of the service and attaches to the galvanized. So, as far as the new lead and copper rule and the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources are concerned, any galvanized piping downstream of lead piping at any point in time is considered lead and needs to be replaced.
And I guess just for another clarification. So, this is exterior to the home when we say downstream, correct?
Well, even in our plumbing code, I believe, is just the service going up to the meter. But, you know, in theory, any galvanized in the home itself should also be replaced because that would also absorb those particles.
Right, right, but this applies to the exterior or all?
I would have to double-check how that was written. I don't recall off the top of my head how it was written.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. So, we move on to new resolutions. The first one is 21490, approve agreement with Wisconsin and Southern Railroad LLC and Watco Transload LLC for the construction and operation within a railroad easement in the Southwest Industrial Park.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion on 21490. All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried five.
21491, support statewide ban on conversion therapy.
I move for approval.
Second. Discussion on 21491. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried five.
And Resolution 21492, approve resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 6,990,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bond Series 2021F of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding obligations of the city and providing details prescribing the form of bond, authorizing the award of the bonds to the best bidder therefore, levying taxes and related matters.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on 21492. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Finance Director Van Gomple, if you wouldn't mind, we're here for, or this is on the agenda along with the next one, for really two reasons. One, you see some potential for some savings for the taxpayers. But also, two, changing policy in terms of the normal for us. And I'm fully supportive of you guys getting creative and trying to give us the most bang for our buck and try to save us on interest rates. So, maybe you could explain a little bit of both?
Sure. I also, as part of our virtual attendance, is Todd Taves from Elders. So, Todd can help me out on some of the explanation. But this is the first time we're presenting to the city council what's called a parameters resolution in which you would delegate the authority to issue the debt to the city manager or finance director if certain parameters are met. And what we're doing is refinancing basically 2,012 debt. And some of that is general obligation, and some of that is water. On the general obligation, we're anticipating to save about $612,000 over 10 years. That number is kind of shrinking a little bit. Based on current economic conditions, it might be about $20,000 less or $591,000. Again, that's on the general obligation side. And then on the water side, we're anticipating a savings approximately $292,000 over the next 10 years. So, basically, what we're doing is taking debt at a higher interest rate and having a lower interest rate. And by using this parameters resolution, if all these parameters don't come into play, then we just don't issue the debt. So, I don't know if Mr. Taves, if you have some additional comments you'd like to share with the city council?
The only thing I would add, Russ, is that this method, using the parameters resolution, and I think this was conveyed in your memo to the council, but it also affords us the ability, since we don't have to do this refunding, and it's very attractive right now, and we don't expect that market conditions would move so much that it wouldn't make sense to do. But this gives us the flexibility to watch the market, to either enter early or later if we feel there's some compelling reason to do that. And the other thing it does is that it doesn't tie our day of sale to a regular council meeting date. So, again, we can pick a day to sell where there's maybe less paper in the market, and we may have more appetite from bidders than we would on a heavy sale day, typically Mondays and Tuesdays when most governing bodies meet. There's a lot of bond sales, and so sometimes it's better to sell on a Wednesday or Thursday.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
No problem.
Other council members, questions, clarifications on 21492? Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'll just say thank you for bringing this to us. I mean, this is really good stuff. Public, you know, look at the resolution. We give very specific parameters about our expectations for savings. So, it's not about necessarily giving up any authority. It's about delegating, giving you guys the ability to maximize savings for the city, which is great. Thank you.
Yeah, we try to keep an eye on all our debt to just to make sure that it makes sense. Some of it's structured so that we can't call it until a certain date. That's why the timing is so critical now because we can match up the time period we have to reissue the debt and refinance it.
All right, seeing no further questions, shall we call the roll?
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, the next one is 21493, approve resolution providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed 3,150,000, 3,150,000 aggregate principal amount of water system revenue refunding bond Series 2021G of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding obligations of the city and providing details prescribing the form of bond, authorizing the award of the bonds to the best bidder therefore, and providing for the payment of said revenue bonds and other details and covenants with respect thereto.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on 493? All right, please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Our next item is Resolution 21494, approve self-funded health insurance structure and plan design changes for non-ABSMI-represented employees and renewed dental insurance agreement with the Delta Dental of Wisconsin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess if Assistant City Manager Fitzpatrick wouldn't mind telling the people at home what we're looking at. This is driving, this is having a significant impact on our operational budget, you know, that we're going to be looking at soon. But we're in the people business, and our people are our most valuable resource. But in the marketplace, health insurance is going up, and we're no different. And I guess if you wouldn't mind just explaining what we're looking at in terms of that and how it's affecting the city employees.
Sure, I'd be happy to. We had, for a significant period of time, we were self-funded. Our organization was self-funded for health insurance. And probably about, right around 2015, you know, we had the opportunity after we, after the council approved us, the opportunity to enter into the agreement for our health clinic with the county and the school district. It really provided a chance for us to save significantly with our health insurance. So, because of that, because the council allowed us to enter into that agreement, we were a very attractive client for a lot of fully insured products. So, we took advantage of that in order to save the city as much money as we possibly could. So, over that time period, rather than having an 8% increase, which is kind of the industry standard, we actually decreased our insurance from 2015 all the way until probably last year, 2020, whereby our increase that we're realizing now this year, we're just approaching the levels of premium costs that we had back in 2015. So, we took a little break from self-funding in order to save the city as much as we could possibly could, keep the rates low for our employees. But now, we've seen an uptick of costs, and we think that it's time for us to return to the self-funded marketplace. And also, it's really a better model for a clinic, a near-site clinic. Our partners have both went in that direction, and we're the last partner to go in that direction. So, with that all said, it's still a significant increase. We decided to make some changes, slight changes to our prescription drug program and also to our deductible. With that all said, the budgeted increase is going to be 12% this year, which is about $723,000 impact to the budget. So, it's not insignificant, but I think this is the proper time for us to return to being self-funded. I think it'll really position the city well going forward with the clinic and also provide us opportunities to have a little more financial flexibility.
Appreciate it very much, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We've been talking about this for the last two budget years about there may be an opportune time, or a more opportune time, to bring this back. So, it appears to be that time.
And I would acknowledge the guidance of council. When we went back to a fully insured plan, we have a health insurance fund that the council directed us to maintain that balance. And you need a balance for your, a self-insured fund because you can have up and down years. And I'm happy to report, we have approximately $1.8 million in that fund. So, the seed money to re-enter the self-insured program is appropriate and solid. So, we're happy to be able to have that type of reserve for our level of Program 1.8 is about what we'd want.
Nice job.
All right, any other comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 21495, approve vendor agreement with Pramus Health for the provision of employee health clinic services at Three Waves Health Clinic and Wellness Center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 21496, approve professional services agreement with Gallagher for benefit consulting services.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Just a quick question for the public. Benefit, what is this benefit consulting services going to provide?
These are the consultants that we use to evaluate what sort of vendors we have for our entire benefits programs. And it's especially important now that we're going back to a self-funded program. So, we basically kind of construct our own insurance company. We have somebody that's a third-party administrator that takes care of all of our bills. We have stop-loss coverage that protects the city from real catastrophic claims. We have a pharmacy benefit manager that deals with all of the prescription drugs and discounts associated with that. So, they help us negotiate those agreements, the discounts, and make sure that the self-funded plan is going to be operating appropriately. And in addition to that, they help us with any other benefit questions that we may have, unique circumstances with our employees, manage any kind of strange appeals that might present themselves. And also, it helps us with any RFPs going forward when we're evaluating the potential for making any changes.
In some cases, you'll see that employers have a broker who really represents the insurance companies. This person works for us specifically. A good way to, a good analogy is like Mr. Taves doing financial consulting. He works for us and is paid by us. So, we, it costs us $72,000, but the benefit we get is they're representing us and they're doing all the, addressing all of the issues if they come up. If we have a problem, we pick up the phone and call them, and they represent us.
I think that's a great point that Mark made. And I'd just add one more little thing, which is in those broker arrangements, they receive a percentage of the, of the potential business that might actually take place with their client, whereas a consultant has just paid this fee and doesn't have that opportunity. That's the difference between those two types.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have any other discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, next is Resolution 21497, donation to the Boys and Girls Club of Oshkosh. Councilmember Miller's salary.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
I think it's obvious, just to be clear, we're not doing this against Councilmember Miller's will. It's not a forced donation.
Yeah, I think I heard he gives out a lot of envelopes. I do have a serious question, though, really. Councilmember Miller, how, can you just let us know why you're requesting this since, you know, the rest of us council members, we just tend to write a check when we donate our salaries? Why would we not, why would you not do that in this situation?
Yeah, it's real simple. It's, I've done this for years, and my frustration was that it's, it's pre-tax or post-tax dollars. The Boys and Girls Club actually gets robbed of 50% of the money. So, by the city donating this money, they get 100% of it. So, it's just real simple.
Further questions, discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Miller.
Present.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried five, one present.
All right, next we have Resolution 21498, creating parameters for usage of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'm happy to get us started. Thank you. I know this, the goal of this resolution, the immediate-term goal, is to give the city some direction and to set some community expectations around the distribution of our ARPA funds. Just to be clear, this doesn't make any specific decision about projects we're funding or not funding. It creates goals, creates ground rules that align our processes with those goals. I discussed this at the last meeting. We had a nice little discussion. The resolution just reflects the things we already, already discussed there. In terms of split, it puts 75% of our funds towards infrastructure projects that are already scored in our CIP process. It sets 25% of the funds for projects and programs that came from our community input process. The logic of that split is based on the savings we get from funding our infrastructure projects with cash rather than debt. So, it reduces our debt service costs in that regard. It ensures we don't create ongoing program expenses that will require non-ARPA funds. We don't want to create a situation where we have structural deficits from our use of this one-time money. It ensures we give consideration to the areas of the city that are most impacted by COVID, that we don't fund duplicate projects, and that we invite input from the DEI for any equity concerns they might raise. Now, the longer-term goal is to use these funds in a way that maximizes their impact. The COVID disruption, I think we all know, is going to be lasting. Hence, I think it's important we act long-term with the distribution of these funds. I saw a comment in the Oshkosh Examiner this morning about this strategy potentially preventing us from making a multi-generational impact with these funds. I totally disagree with that. Our decisions around infrastructure that we make, however we make them, are multi-generational, for good or for bad. I mean, I think of the emails we get complaining about flooding, about potholes. I mean, those are all functions of decisions that were made about infrastructure in the past. These have a lasting impact. We have an opportunity here to use these funds to meet our infrastructure needs while freeing up funds that would have been spent on debt service for a generation. That's a huge opportunity, and it creates flexibility moving forward for a generation. I admit, it may not be exciting. I pride myself on being boring when it comes to local government. I take a look at the state and federal level over the last couple of years, and I think boring is good. I don't think we need all that excitement. It's not a, funding a shiny object, so it's not going to get a lot of attention, but it is fiscally responsible. It's an approach that will give both immediate benefits and yield long-term benefits for the residents of Oshkosh. So, I hope the council will support it. Thanks.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I couldn't agree more, and I didn't see the article this morning. But this, this is the taxpayers' money. This is, this is every citizen of Oshkosh's money. And this council owes it to them to spend this appropriately and frugally. So, I couldn't agree with this approach more, and I want to thank you again for putting this structure together. So, I don't, I don't think anybody cares up here about shiny, flash-in-the-pan ideas. We are returning this money to the taxpayer and funding projects that are already in process. And I couldn't feel more strongly about moving forward under this process. So, thanks again.
Other council members? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, Councilmember Ford basically said everything I had planned on saying. I just wanted to echo Mr. Miller that I appreciate you putting this together. This is, you know, through brief conversations amongst, you know, you and me, and these are also some similar things I've spoken with the city manager about at different times. These are really in line with a lot of our thinking, and I appreciate you putting pen to paper and crafting something for us to consider. I'm fully supportive of the entire document. It gives staff some ideas of where we want to go. It's still very, it's still vague, of course. It's still, which is exactly the way it's intended to be, and yet, it puts us in within certain parameters. It does address that we've got areas of the community that we should try to use funding for. It segregates those funds a little bit upfront, and it gives some direction to city managers. So, fully supportive of what you've put here, and it gets us to the next step so then we can start hearing about how to physically, you know, use those funds, so.
And I want to thank Councilmember Ford for taking the initiative to draft this. Appreciate all of the thought that went into that. And I don't think anybody up here takes this lightly because it is literally once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I keep thinking about the title of these funds, "The American Rescue and Recovery." That means, for me, people. And while we do have... And while we do have a significant number of CIP projects that this could make a big dent in, and I appreciate an offering of a place to start to discuss this, to prioritize for infrastructure projects. There were, you know, four different categories, general categories. And I actually took part in a couple of workshops and, you know, information seminars where there were some best practices suggested that also related to, you know, data and emphasis that the intention was to address folks that are directly impacted and especially impacted more so than others. So, you know, qualified census tracts distrust areas, of which we have several in the community. So the proposal here is that we would prioritize, the top priority is CIP, and then following that, anything that the public had put forth. And I noticed in our survey that we got back, I kind of did a tally, and there were four themes that really were emphasized in those responses. Water, clean water, dealing with any of our water, streets, bike and ped, and broadband. And, you know, it's nice that there's the kind of afterthought, special consideration should go to some of those areas of the city that were most impacted and equity concerns. But I guess I'm a little confused about the difference between a priority and a special consideration. One would think, in looking at this, that we, you know, were saying, yeah, we should give a nod to that. And so I would actually propose reversing the percentages to 25% consideration of the city infrastructure projects and 75% towards the direct response to those hit the hardest. And that's, you know, that's what I'd hope that we get a chance to discuss here tonight. But I really do appreciate this starting point. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I'll just point out, though, the four things you mentioned, water, streets, bike and ped, broadband. I mean, those are things that are infrastructure projects that we have in our CIP. To me, our infrastructure serves our people. I mean, that is, I mean, we can talk about direct assistance, we can talk about sending money directly into people's pockets, but we can, I think, for lasting impact, and don't get me wrong, right? We set aside in this 25% of our funds for those community-oriented projects that can include those types of proposals. But infrastructure is impacting real people today. It's going to be impacting real people in 10 years, just like the after-effects of COVID-19 disruptions are going to be impacting real people today, impacting real people in 10 years. And I do want to point out that it certainly was not an afterthought to consider the areas of the city that were most impacted by COVID-19. It was certainly not an afterthought to formally mention the DEI committee, which I know that this body created and this body supports. And I think it's a great way to use the DEI committee, that we have individuals there that can serve as the bridge between the community and us to highlight any equity concerns. So it's not just about, it's not just about us pulling, you know, not random projects, but, you know, up here choosing projects. We don't want me saying that we got to do $20 million of shorefishing infrastructure, because I could go there. Right? I want to hear from people that actually, right, they've been picked and they've been approved to serve on that committee to get at some of those equity concerns and translate them to us. I think this split as is, I like that there's a logic to it. I like that it's having a, it's not double dipping, but it's really, it's logically dividing it based on the fact that we're freeing up some of these savings by shifting money away from debt. So I think there's a logic to it. I don't think that anything's going to be perfect, but I like it as it is, but appreciate those comments.
I guess, I just want to use an example here. So we have, for example, in our CIP that we passed in this first year of that, you know, the east extension of Ninth Street. You know, currently, there aren't really very many folks that are living in that area that we're extending out to. But of course, this serves some of our other goals and objectives, right? But it's higher on the priority list, and I guess I just use that as an example that doesn't quite meet the existing, you know, population that was referenced. So like I said, I appreciate the clarification about the special consideration versus the priority, and that's why I was hoping that we could talk a little more about that. Other councilmembers? Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Thanks again, Councilmember Ford, for putting this together and giving us some guidance. I think, you know, at first, I was kind of leaning more towards, you know, wanting to see more of a 50-50 split between priorities that the public brought to us and CIP, mostly because of, you know, all of the staff time that we put into that process of hearing from the public and the time that it takes for nonprofits and groups and organizations to put in those requests. But I understand the reasoning. I think I'm still more comfortable at 50-50, but I'm glad that we have some sort of structure to work off of.
I guess another question I would have, too, is it's early in the process still, and I'm glad that we're having the conversation early. I was, I guess, under the impression we might have it early and often because it's not over yet. We don't quite know what's to come, and there is some flexibility, which is appreciated there. But I'm also thinking that we still haven't seen the housing study that we've been expecting. And, you know, that's a pretty significant, I guess, consideration for folks here, too. So I guess I might be inclined to lay this over until we get that presented to us because that could affect maybe some amendments to the CIP or other considerations with the ARPA dollars.
Can I ask, what's the timeline for the housing study? And would that impact us making decisions here with ARPA?
We actually just received our first draft of the housing study, so staff is going through it right now. And we hope in early October, we'll have a draft that will work with some of the committees and stakeholder groups and plan commissions. So hopefully in October here, you'll see that final draft. And as far as recommendations, there, my guess is there probably will be some recommendations for some housing programs to assist with affordable housing, encourage redevelopment, redevelopment. So that's something that we can definitely communicate with council if they'd like that information to consider.
So councilmember Ford, how might that work in your proposal, then? How would you see that? Let's say there was a, I don't know, million-dollar, $2-million-suggestion that came out of there that were like, yes, that's going to help us. How does this work for that? Yes?
It would work the same as any other request. I guess I don't fully understand the question. I mean, this, again, specifically, this does not go into any one project or another. Right, our needs are infinite. There's going to be needs tomorrow, there's going to be needs in a week from now, things that we can't anticipate. What I like about having a framework there is that at least it gives the city some guidance, gives the public some reassurance that we have a process here for doling out these funds. And I think more importantly, it gives some long-term flexibility for when those needs do arise, whether it's the housing study at the end of the month or something that comes up afterwards.
So do you foresee this, then? Should there be something in there that we want to act on, that we go back and amend, like the CIP, for example? Or?
Yeah, we have the ability to do that anytime we want to as a council.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Others? All right, please call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrow.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we next are at council discussion and direction of city manager, future agenda items. Do we have any requests for specific future agenda items by council? I think in the past, I haven't quite asked that question very clearly. This would be a time that one could bring up future agenda items. Just a reminder, future meetings, I did want to ask folks about December. It's a little early. Traditionally, we have recessed after the first council meeting in December, and I believe this falls on the 28th for the fourth Tuesday. Just asking folks what they think about holding a council meeting on December 28th or recessing until the new year. Deputy Mayor.
I'd like to keep with tradition and that we not hold that meeting, not only just for councilmembers, but more importantly for city staff, that they work long and hard during the year, and that tends to be a week of recess for them and that time around, then. So it would be, it's not just that meeting, it's also the week and 10 days before that of compiling a whole meeting's agenda. So I'd be completely supportive of skipping the 28th of December.
I see heads nodding.
Oh, yeah.
We'll bring, that requires an ordinance, we'll bring that forward. So thank you for the early feedback.
Deputy Mayor.
But I expect you and Fitz to be on the job.
Naturally.
In terms of future meetings, I want to give councilmembers a heads-up to put onto their calendars with plenty of notice. We're going to be looking at a closed session, most likely the evening of the 23rd of November, as well as potentially then, most likely the evening of the 14th of December for the city manager's review process. I'd like to get that hopefully finalized before the end of the year, and those would be the usual two meetings that we would do, that after the budget is adopted at the first meeting in November, so.
Deputy Mayor, might I suggest that we try this before our meeting as opposed to after? What do you, or at one of them, kind of give a little framework there?
Sure, no, I think the November the 23rd is going to need to be after. That one's uncontrollable in terms of the discussion. Usually that's a great discussion night and don't want to be constrained with 45 minutes ahead or requiring people to leave work early for those that work during the day. But I think after we have that meeting, council collectively can decide if they feel we need a short amount of time or a long amount of time for that next meeting. So I think we just keep that one kind of flexible.
All right.
But just know that we'll have one both nights, most likely.
All right. And then we, again, future workshops, the third and fourth budget workshops, October 18th and 19th, again, all day here in 404 in your packet. You have some homework to fill out for that. Shouldn't take you very long. City, councilmember announcements and statements. Do we have any reports on liaison for boards and commissions? Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks, I can give one.
Then Miller and Wojciechowski.
I'll give a report from Transit Advisory Board. We typically receive the ridership numbers each meeting. And so just an overview, ridership on the transit is overall still down from 2019, but is starting to catch up. However, with K through 12 student ridership, that continues to increase. So Go Transit has provided 40,886 rides to K through 12 students this year through August. They provided just under 3,000 rides in August alone for students. The new quantum wheelchair security system will be in every bus by November, so that's a much, hopefully a much simpler way for folks who use wheelchairs to be able to ride securely and be able to get in themselves without assistance. And the last piece, construction will hopefully be starting on the downtown Transit Center in November. And through winter, that's for their phase one, so that would include a staff break room and bathroom, a customer service window, which will be very helpful for folks down at the downtown Transit Center needing help with rides and such, and then replacing the brick pavers. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
Do you mind? Forty thousand riders for youth or school-aged children, that was January 1 to August-ish of this year, you were saying?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah, year-to-date total student ridership, so this would include public and private K through 12, 40,886.
That's fantastic.
And I can tell you anecdotally, the numbers will continue to rise. The interest is rising.
In terms of our conversations in the future, I see a lovely spreadsheet that traffic absolutely should be getting. At some point, maybe Director Collins can share, when it gets like to the annual time, maybe we could just be included in some of that because that's fantastic information.
It is exciting. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. We had our CVB meeting, Convention and Visiter Beer Meeting, at our new Whitman FOB, or FBO, sorry, fixed base operator base there in Oshkosh, the new, our new county airport facility. It's amazing, I would encourage everybody to take a tour. It's very nice, refreshing, they've got community rooms, boardroom there for us. Jim Shell did a great job, him and his entire staff. I want to thank the county board. They did a great job of making this all happen out there, so get a tour, stop out there, say hi to everybody, so. And the other thing, I'd like to thank Russ and Finance for getting this deal done with Ellers. Staff did a great job, thank you. This is going to save the city a lot of money. It's real forward-thinking, so thank you, to you and your entire staff. And I'd like to thank Fitzy and Mark on making, donating a little bit easier for everybody. So thanks, guys, appreciate it. So thanks, all.
And I'd just like to add a, I'm sorry, Aaron, you go ahead, you were next.
I just wanted to mention that DEI met yesterday virtually. Really, the more important thing that we did, we had two presentations from potential facilitators to kind of get the process started of our, you know, our action plan, basically, which was one of the goals of the committee when it was created. So we're moving that process along now. Both presentations were great, so going forward, not exactly sure what the next step is, but the hope is to get a facilitator so we can start crafting that action plan. And just generally, the committee had been talking about ways that they can get more involved with outreach. One of the opportunities was doing like a column in the Herald to kind of just talk about different diversity and equity issues and just try to get overall more input from the community. So I'm really glad that the committee is, you know, really excited to work on some new initiatives, and we welcome two new members, so it was great. Thank you.
Very good. I just have one additional announcement, and that is there are a number of board and commission openings. We have several alternate spots and a couple of full seats. And appreciate folks going online to the City of Oshkosh Government Boards and Commissions, and you can apply there, and you can see some of the vacancies. As well as a reminder that now that school is back in session, we also have openings for youth members to apply. And if anyone is interested in the high school, the high schools here in serving as an ex officio youth member, that's a great opportunity, and please contact the city manager's office for those youth applications. That's all. And we are at city manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your agenda packet, there are two memos, one regarding a cooperative purchase of what's called an Axon redaction feature. It allows us to, there are certain, when we provide requests for video from body cameras, we are required to redact certain faces, youth, for example. This facilitates getting that redacted, and it sort of recognizes the same face and then redacts it through the entire video. It makes it a lot easier, otherwise you're literally going slide through slide. So we're real happy to be able to announce that cooperative purchase. We have a new professional services agreement with a group to do our employment. agreement with a group to do our employee assistance program, our EAP, so we're happy to be moving ahead with that. Outstanding issues, I just want to give you a few highlights. The very first one is one that has been there for a while, but I'm happy to report, we had our first meeting with the consultant for the fire department facility study. We're expecting that to be done over the course of the winter. The whole idea is that we'll be able to have a presentation for you prior to the next year's capital improvement process. So you, you get an idea of what, what it's going to take and what the price tag's going to be, because that's always the big issue, is what's the price tag. But taking a look at long-term needs for the fire department, do we need to move any facilities? Are we sufficient in what our facilities may contain, things like that. So you'll be seeing that next, in keeping with one of my, my goals there. The fee to replace special assessments for street improvements, the presentation is scheduled for our next meeting on October 12th. Mr. Mazanek from R.A. Smith will be here. Let's see, some of the other ones, continuing to work with day-by-day on facility options. I actually, Ms. Nyforth and I had a field visit out to the site to work with the housing authority and, and day-by-day on some issues. So you'll see that moving forward. There's obviously funding issues with the county that they're also working on, but we worked through a few things that they're going to need to do. Eventually, they have to come and get it all approved, both from a planning and then eventually funding with the council. So that's, we're moving forward with that. There actually has been some progress with the Tiny Homes Project. It is not a city project, but it, it absolutely has an issue to deal with short and long-term homeless issues, and I will be meeting in the, in the next couple of weeks with the representatives of the Tiny Homes Project to really get an update because they haven't formally approached us. One of the very last inquiries we got for funding was actually from that group for ARPA funding. So we'll take a look at that, but they're, they get, they have a lot of work to do, but they're doing some active fundraising. So proceeding with that. And with that, I guess I'll leave it open for any questions council may have on that one. COVID-19 update. If you looked at the numbers from the county health department, are, we still rate very high in the county. Additionally, if you take a look at a subset of numbers specifically for the Oshkosh area school district, it's actually above very high. It's in the critical range in terms of the numbers. The school district just made the announcement they were going to continue with masks, and I'm going to make the decision to, to move, continue with the mask requirement in our buildings through the end of October. I believe the school district did it through November 5th, but we're close. I will backtrack just a little bit because I just want to point out, last year, you may recall, that our budget workshops were done virtually. I can tell you, as much as we don't like the masks, we really like meeting with you. So I, my, but I just want to point out, as uncomfortable as this may be for an hour or two, it's going to be two days, all day. So now, with that said, your favorite restaurant, your serving staff probably has the same issue, but I just want to point out that that's going to be an all-day affair for two days in a row. The departments think it's easy because they only have to come up before you for an hour. The seven of you and a few staff members, we're going to be masked up all day. So just forewarning you.
City manager, we talked about that on Monday or yesterday morning, and I can't recall, did you say we do have an option for another location that might be better ventilation since we cannot open these windows?
I haven't looked, I haven't evaluated that yet, but yeah, I think it's worth looking at, and we will, we will look at other options.
Okay.
Okay. And just a couple shameless commercial announcements. Save the date for Zuluinbu, which is October 17th and 18th. Actually, it's 16th and 17th, excuse me. I knew that because we're not going to compete with Zuluinbu for our budget workshop at 16th and 17th. That's going to be 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and there will be, you'll see more information coming out, but the idea is to have it as a, an open event, not a virtual event. But they're making plans just in case they need to go virtual. What they really did virtual was, rather than kids running around the zoo, people drove through and people handed out candy. So what, what did you call it, Madam Mayor?
Oh, trunk-or-treat?
Yeah, trucker, trunk-or-treat.
Trunk-or-treat.
So it would be kind of like that. So just to let you know. And then the other one, we have already gotten calls, so I might as well make the announcement. We typically, when Halloween falls on a weekend, we do it four to seven, so make sure your kids have extra-large bags when they're, when they're going out this year, because you'll have three hours of trick-or-treating ahead of you. And so I'll buy an extra bag of candy at home.
And just a reminder, that is separate and distinct from the downtown trick-or-treating, whatever is being planned there, if anything. This is the city-wide.
This is door-to-door, and we'll do another commercial message for the bid later on. But yeah, thank you very much for pointing that out.
I just had one follow-up on the outstanding issues, real quick, if I may.
Sure.
On the continuing the incorporation of equity inclusion into day-to-day operations. Obviously, we talked earlier about the, the ARPA piece of this, and I believe staff did some training in May, and there was some thought that the DEI committee would be receiving some of those draft equity pieces for consideration, in hopes that they could review them before the budget is passed. Is that still on track to happen?
If, the goal was not to get it to them for the budget, the goal was to get it to them so that we could start using those measures come January 1. That's one of Mr. Fitzpatrick's goals, and you will be seeing them shortly. They will go to the DEI committee to get their input so that by December, or by December, by the end of the year, we get them approved so that we are start, start using those measures to actually measure our achievement towards goals effective January 1.
I can just report a little bit more on the progress, if you'd like.
Certainly.
Sure. So we, so we're, we're integrating a lot of the concepts and ideas that we had from our, we're in the process of integrating those ideas that came from our retreat, you know, into the plan framework. And in addition to that, we've gathered ideas for departmental goals, which is part of the component of the DEI charge. So we've gathered ideas for departmental goals from that workshop, that's one source, from the DEI strategic planning facilitator. And also, we're working on a benchmarking project with our entire strategic plan, whereby we're looking at all the communities in the United States that have been recognized as leaders in terms of their benchmarking, how they compare to other communities. And then through that process, we're looking departmentally, so we can create a menu to talk to our departments about what potential benchmarks they'd like to implement in regard to our strategic plan. While we did that, we also looked at DEI measures in those very high-performing communities. So we have that as another resource for us to draw upon. And then, so finally, once we're ready, we'll meet with the individual departments, go through all the kind of menu of potential goals that might address the requirements associated with DEI, and then ask them which ones they're interested in. Try to sift that down to, to a manageable number, and then, you know, once we get that finalized, then we could bring that information to the DEI committee for their thoughts.
So if I understand that right, this is a really great opportunity for the DEI committee, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, to actually give some input and recommendations to council going into our strategic planning process next year.
Hopefully, we can get that all completed. That's our goal.
Yeah. And there'll be some of this in written form. I will be giving you a third-quarter update. That's on my list of things to talk with staff tomorrow, and obviously, this is one of my goals for the year. So you'll get a written version of Mr. Fitzpatrick's comments here. So let's see. And the other thing, you know, since you pointed out the training staff, we are initiating, we did this, the training that we did with staff was with management and, senior management, division heads and department heads. Now, we're also doing employee training with supervisors and some other staff, and that's going to be starting when Fitz.
That's going to be starting in this next month, so we should be being able to roll out to supervisors and additional staff. Not all the components that we were able to cover with the department heads and managers. I think out of the, like, the four components, I think we're able to get two in hopefully this year yet. So that's our goal.
So we're working, we're, we're taking it down through the organization. So far, the reception's been very good.
Are some of those, are some of those equity measures including, like, gender pay parity and things like that within our organization?
We haven't really focused on the measures, you know, in regard to what Mr. Rollup was saying, the training, the components. I think one of them is implicit bias. I'm trying to think of the other one that's, that we're going to be discussing with the employees and first-line supervisors. It just escapes me right now, I'm sorry. We had four when we talked to the managers.
And those are the types of measure, but to answer your question, because I think she went back to measures away from the training.
Sorry.
That's okay. I, I.
We haven't identified, we haven't finalized or even got to a, a final list of those measures yet. We, we just kind of have the universe collected in the manner.
But that's why we're comparing to see, is that a common goal, that, that measure that people are using? And are they successful in gathering data? Is there good benchmark data? Because if it's not good benchmark, we're a little reluctant to use it.
And, and just one more thing, you know, I, one of the things that, you know, I think council knows we're working on is that benchmarking project. And, you know, measures are great, but if you can't compare them against anything, it makes it difficult to determine how meaningful they are. So I know this isn't what council necessarily asked for specifically. We just kind of took the liberty of trying to go to the next level with this right away, to try to come up with measures that could be used as benchmarks, so we could get those two things taken care of, you know, right from the get-go. So that, that's kind of the idea.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
You kind of touched on it, on what I was going to ask, and you don't have to go into detail. I'm just curious, just generally, what this training entailed, because I've heard a bit about it now, but I'm just curious, like, what, what was the training actually focused on, or what kind of, what did you cover a little bit?
I cut Fitz off while he was answering that, because I, but implicit bias is, is the, the first.
Implicit bias, I think Michelle Benke is still here, if she wants to just stop up. She could talk about the other three components, and then more precisely what the dates are for the rest of the training, and then what we're going to be covering with this group.
Absolutely. So the subjects that we covered with the managers included microaggressions, implicit bias, the history of diversity, equity, inclusion, and I know there's one more that is also escaping me. But we are paring that down a little bit for all of our employees. We actually are in the process of doing that training. We had three sessions today, very socially-distanced, but we're very happy to be continuing that. And it is a mixture of things like implicit bias, microaggressions, conflict management, and a little bit about the DEI history.
Civility was another.
Civility, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
I'll, I'll be real quick. Just want to say thank, thank you, Assistant City Manager, Fitzpatrick. I know when we first debated these things, there was discussion about how do we create buy-in, how do we ensure that it's something that is actually integrated into the day-to-day operations, and it's clear you're all taking it seriously. So it's appreciated.
Yeah, and I think too, just to build on that, you know, we had a really good session, I thought, with the department heads and managers. They understand how important this is to our organization and the community. And I think, you know, the thought behind us moving forward and trying to make this training available to everyone is we want the entire organization to understand and feel comfortable with what we're doing, why we're doing it, and support it. And that's, that's really part of the process that was put into place, you know, in terms of how we were going to roll this out into our organization. So.
We're pleased with the progress and appreciate the support of council on it. That's all I have, unless there's any more questions.
All right. I think that is all. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.